I'm going to call the public tax hearing to order. We've got a sign-in sheet in the back for the general public, anybody else that is attending the meeting, anybody that wishes to speak. They have approximately two minutes to make their comments. Does anybody here desire to make any comments pertaining to the tax rates? Yes, sir.
I just recently moved back here from Ohio. Been up there 43 years. This is my home county. And I believe the tax rates are plenty high down here. I mean, I'm just not used to this tax being able to be raised every year and the school system depending on that tax rate to be raised every year to make up their budget for the year. Where I lived, every year we were able to vote on any school tax levy and if the school board did a good job with the monies that they were given, they usually got the tax approved. But, you know, I'm taxed to death down here. I'm thinking about moving back to Ohio because of the taxes or at least buying a house up there so I can license my vehicles in Ohio and not have to pay the tax on them down here.
Any other comments from the public on the tax rate? If there are not be any other comments, do we have to do anything? Okay, I call for a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. For those of you who came up at the public hearing, thank you. Now we will go into the Johnson County Board Education Reverberating Meeting for September 26th.
Again, we'd like to do what district recognition would have at this time. I was going to ask Mr. Hall at the high school kind of give us an update where our teams, clubs, organizations are at this time. Hall is going to start the middle school.
Sure. Right now, we're about to end on our football season. I think we play the last home game Saturday, start the playoffs next week. I think October 8th is we host seventh and eighth grade academic teams starting their season, the EKAC by Saturday. Girls' basketball is coming to an end. And I don't think I made the agenda, or industry set made the agenda, but they do play in KBA I think October 14th, 15th. That's postseason state tournament. And I think it's been all good and well.
High school, a lot of the policies are out. A couple of us have the regional girls' golf tournament today. I have results on that yet. Well, this regional golf tournament is tomorrow. Of course, we know another big win Friday night, football down in Bullin County. Going to East Carter this week as we continue district play as Mr. Hall says. Also, our academic teams have started their season. The games they hosted today at high school on Saturday. So again, all teams are doing well. We just wish them the best of luck as well they continue their seasons.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve August 22nd Reverberating Meeting and bills and payroll through September 22nd?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item seven, renovation report, Mr. Rowland.
We're nearing the end of flat gap. They have put a base coat of black top down Saturday, a finished coat today. They're not finished with striping. We have a couple of doors inside, just a few minor things. At this time, I recommend we just hold this for next month and let them get done and pay off.
Thank you. No action to be taken on item seven per the request of Mr. Rowland. Item eight, new business, Ms. Goble.
I always thought you'd take some time to remind the board and all the community members that this is the final working budget. It's the last budget that I present to the board annually. The draft is presented in January and the tentative is presented in the first debate. The fiscal year '17 final working budget as presented contains the base estimate of anticipated revenue and expenditures for this 2017 fiscal year. This budget is very similar to the tentative budget that was approved by the board in May. General fund seat was changed based on the last estimate that KD provided in June, and that's at $17,550,842. Some of the other bases that I use for estimates are the current board proof staffing and funding, allocated funding, actual contractual costs for services, policies and fees such as our audit costs and our insurance policies that we pay every year. And just the estimates of our plant operation and maintenance based on prior year history entrants and information that KD has provided at this time. And of course, it does have a property tax revenue that reflects a proportion increase in this point of that's approved. The carry forward for this year is $6,633,256. Some important expenditures I'd like to point out is that budget for staff increases and loan checking raises for the staff. The KISB assessment payments were added to the budget as well as three school buses. I'm just asking for approval.
Motion to approve.
So made. Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Given the discussion. If there be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item eight B, Ms. Goble.
We ask the board to approve the 2017 property rates of 49 cents per $100 on general fund, real estate, and personal property. This does include 3 cents for exoneration, stated clauses from prior year. And also, the board needs to approve the motor vehicle rate at 52.5 cents per $100. And that rate has been the same in the 11 years that I've been working here, so I'm changing that rate.
Thank you.
I'd like to do something, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
If you look, if you look at some posters, things, it talks about what the surrounding districts are. If you look, we're the very bottom one on the right. If you look at it in reality compared to where some of our neighbors and our surrounding districts are here. If we could see just how many.
Mr. Chairman, we had enough time to know that's what we do. On the year.
1.7 cents would be through a $100,000 home, that would be $17 over a $100,000 home. Or put in layman's terms, a couple of cases pop here. I mean, for three for 10 or three for 11 at Food City and Walmart right now, so I mean...
That's on a $100,000 home.
That's on a $100,000 home.
Average chance 30 percent.
Johnson County.
Again, I hope Val is distributed to you Districtal Open Records Meeting Act, the things are required to follow according to the open records and management material. I think you all are required to sign those and we're required to keep a copy here at the board office.
Thank you. Next, we've got...
I have a motion that we...
Oh, B.
Yeah, you do.
My bad.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Val. Next, Mr. Sayer.
Again, we'd like today to ask you to continue to purchase here Chromebooks for our students in grades seven through 12 in Johnson County schools. That's approximately 1,600 Chromebooks. We've made a great initiative in the last couple of years with having technology coaches out. As you all remember, you're blue spots for Rachel Holbrook, Dr. Holbrook, and Lisa Sayer last year. They've done a great job out here and helped provide instructional practices and strategies for our kids and a little implementation of this project here. We've been around in the last two weeks and talked to everyone, staff in Johnson County schools about this. We spent a lot of time over there last week and the last two days at the high school working with our kids and staff over there, initiatives and processes such as going through what would be a digital driver's license for our students and for faculty and staff. Everyone we've talked to is extremely excited about this project and it is because of your due diligence of the board and being good managers of our money here and good steward of our money here because this is possible due to our kids' offers of assistance that we've received each year. Again, whatever we get from the state, if... Last year was about $79,000. You all matched the $79,000. Previously, we've used this money for things such as 21st Century classrooms that you all have completed here seven, eight years ago. Last couple of years ago, we redid all our infrastructure so we'd be able to do these wireless programs across the district here. And I just think it's a huge step for our kids going forward. I don't know, there's another district that has done this large of Chromebook initiative at one time, and it's just something that I think is going to be a huge educational success for our students here in Johnson County. We've got a few slides and things, Charles, here as we go through the... Look at that, when... Just some of the reasons and things behind all this.
Just one of the reasons to implement, you know, we've gone to a pretty well anytime, anywhere educational model. If there's a couple of kids actually in a brick and mortar building, doesn't mean they can't be learning. Collaborative learning, you can actually have students cross educating papers in real time. Meanwhile, for more personalized learning, the program, how some students learn at different paces than others. And you're going to have improved interaction. You're going to have the kid that maybe sits in the back of the classroom that doesn't like to actually talk in class, but through a model such as this, they could actually collaborate and actually have better interaction with the class. This is our proposed one-to-one device. It's a Lenovo N22. I've actually got a sample here if anybody wants to look at it. It's a fairly rugged device. We bought a couple of these last year. Basically a laptop. It's got tactile feel on it, you know, eight-second boot up. It's a pretty decent device. Student told me five years ago, I put the device in their kid's hand for less than $200, I'd probably go with Blackvision. We're right now setting at 184 pieces with management on these. They're fairly rugged. Although we had the Samsung Chromebooks you're using right now, we actually had those in a few classrooms and they're going on two and a half years at this time, but they're still holding up very well. Some funding sources we've looked at. I approached Mr. Sayers basically the day after Labor Day and said, you know, look, we may have enough in kids' offer of assistance to actually do the initial implementation since we've had seed money through KBC by us on any devices before and past. By using the KBC funds, we offset by 300 devices and our kids' offer of assistance, we actually had enough to go ahead and implement with a little left over for some necessary fees. Some other places we've looked at is, you know, the school instructional funds. We're asking the principals at the high school and middle school to pitch in $5 per student to help hide a hard case for it. We know the kids aren't going to carry this as their primary, but it's designed in the way that they put it in. It's got a decent padding as a primary protection device for them. They can actually slide it to a book bag, still protected, not intrusive. We're also looking at annual technology fee from students to help them get a buy-in to the program. You know, if you just give them the device, they're not going to really view that ownership there. But, you know, you're charging $30 a year, they're wanting to take into it. They're going to say, "Ron, I paid for this device. I need to be more responsible for it." And one thing we're looking at is an annual senior buyout, not this school year since we're starting so late into the year, but starting with the '17, '18 school year. Maybe next year, we'll do a pro-rided discount on the device. Kid may be able to purchase it for, let's say, they've already paid $30, they'll purchase it for $150. And eventually, once we get to the device level, when the kid graduates, they can walk out with the device at no cost of the denture. That gets it out of our inventory. It's also approaching an end of life. We don't need to be keeping those devices if we don't need them. There's the cost projections. Now, this is reusing the 300 we already have on this campus. We're looking at $251,905.20 to purchase those. We're also going to go ahead and purchase for the staff as well. We're going to roll to the staff if logistics worked out and the board approves, we're going to roll devices to staff on the 10th of October with students rolling after the next board meeting. There's the Chromebook cost breakdown. Originally, the device was $203. I approached our vendors and after a couple of days of negotiations, they came back and that was the price they offered the device for us at. $159 for the device. You need the management software on which is $25, which brings it to $184 per device. And to help make the sustainability of the project, there's a fee schedule breakdown. This is just proposed fees, you know, actually what your... This is ideal circumstances for incoming, where you get it back every year. If you do $30 and every kid pays, you're looking at about $40,000 that you put back into the program through the technology fee. Then, eyes are blurred a little bit. Sustainability, we're looking at a refresh on every year, seventh grader gets a new device and every year, a 10th grader gets a new device. We're going to take those devices back down to the elementaries, which means actually if we follow this model, not this school year, but the next school year, will be one-to-one grades five through 12. And the case is looking $13.99 a piece right now. But this has been a rapid project. We're pulling on about three weeks of just working on it. We're getting presentations ready, trying to figure out everything, also doing the trainings that the...
Smart.
And the replacement schedule, we've already gone over that. We just kind of realized fifth through 12th next year since we're not going to let seniors buy off this year. So that's significant.
Saves the district.
Saves the district plus a great boost to our technology program. Preparation costs that we've done over the years, Mr. Burcett, when he was in the technology department, he does a 21st Century classroom and it was roughly $2 million. That puts a 50-inch plasma display in every classroom with a card, document camera, workstation, VCR, you know, the clickers. We've also, when, you know, Mr. Burcett's still in the department, we've done a network infrastructure upgrade. We've done, this was a forklift upgrade through the use of E-Rate funds, so we've paid pennies on the dollars for this. We've done a $3 million project for a little over $300,000. So our network, knock on wood, is ready at this moment to go ahead and roll the program. Now, the cost, we've got to remember our infrastructure, ongoing maintenance agreements. We have a core switch center back there that requires about $6,000 service agreement on it each year in case something burns out, we can get a replacement. If it goes down, our district is down hard. Initially, that device was about $80,000. Other things to look at, you know, in the near future, wireless goes into the light, manufacturers quick giving you parts. We have to look at, you know, infrastructure upgrades down the road. I've already run some cost projections and, you know, I'm working with other vendors. I try to do those cost projections about one to two years out of the way E-Rate works. And we do have some software applications we still have to pay out of our kids' offer of assistance such as Muse, which is our financial system, Infinite Campus, which is our student information system, and our Microsoft EES agreement, which makes us clients with no questions asked for Microsoft on client access license, run a Microsoft Office on workstations, whatnot on that. Now, those, Microsoft EES is something we may want to relook at at the end of our agreement because if every kid's using a Chrome device, they don't have to have that license there. So that's potentially a $15,000 a year savings we may have down the road. And we just may need to actually just buy an application for the machines we have then. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you for the program. Is there a motion to approve?
Somebody...
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to say from what I gather from, you know, from KBC, I do think this is history-making. I know, I'd say, Mr. Wilson can probably give us more information on that for how far the whole region goes, but as far as with KBC, this is the largest single rollout ever of workstations of any kind, not just Chromebooks, you know, any type of workstations to kids to take home. So it's a, you know, it's pretty history-making. And I don't know, you could speak more to the broader...
It's certainly the biggest one. I work, I'm Frank Wells with Kentucky Department of Education, Office of Education Technology. I've worked with 22 school districts here from, basically from Paintsville to Augusta and defended up in Bracken County. And this will be the biggest Chrome, single Chromebook rollout. We have a lot of districts are moving in this direction and we are seeing more and more statewide of this. I am very proud. You know, when I used to work for y'all here, I built the first network here and I am very proud to see Johnson County taking this step and highly recommend it. Our daughter is a junior at the University of Kentucky. Her textbooks are online, her assignments are online, her class management in every class is online. And to be educated and prepared for the world of work or the world of college now requires the ability to use these kind of devices, so I strongly recommend it. I wanted to encourage you to approve it.
Disciple model is very impressive. I just want to put, these devices, are they, how connected are they to our network, Frank 's network? I just want, as far as cybersecurity, I'm not on that side of the chart.
The way Google has gone on their devices, they have a $100,000 bounty to the first person that finds a security flaw in their product. It's being looked at seriously.
They provide the most end-to-end patching and threat management updates. You get an update on one of these machines that loads in the background silently. Next time you log on, it'll tell you it's doing it, but it's generally eight to 10 seconds. If you're familiar with the Windows environment, it might be two hours. And good luck to you then. So there, the device choice is excellent and it's all encrypted traffic back to Google. You all have set up a Google domain, correct? So you own whatever the kids or the student, the student or the teacher puts online in Google Apps for Education, Google Classroom, the classroom management system. Johnson County Board of Education has rights to it and owns it. So there's no requirement for a primary child to use this or anything. It's a requirement of proof of age on just an open internet site. If you're over, you have to be over 13 years of age to use that or have a parent verification. You don't in this case because you, the system is an extension of the school system. So the documents they're working on is just as if they're working on a paper document for their teacher. So it's a good fit and a good choice and many of my districts are moving in this direction.
Thank you for that insight.
Again, it's just another tool for expression and practicing strategies here for our teachers to use in the district. And again, many of, we've had, we've got several Chromebook labs and things and iPad labs and Mac labs and things across the district now. And we think this will just be another step that ever our kids achieve success here in Johnson County schools.
And the major testing vendors are all moving to Chromebook. So they believe in the device, so it's a good thing.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Mr. Sayer.
Again, we ask your approval for district wide participation McDonald's Active Lifestyle Grant. So all our schools opportunity to apply for the grant.
Motion made.
Motion made. There are seconds.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Ms. Rice.
I'll be handling that. The district's asking the board for approval for emergency certification for a U.S.B. instructor in the school district. We have an intermunicipal pursuing provisional certificate that's not certified at this time. It is the only applicant for the position. So it's the best, not only is it the best qualified person we can find, but it's the only person we can find that can do the position at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item G, Mr. Sayer.
Again, we'd ask you to approve with the Big Sandy Community Technical College, our dual credit memorandum of agreement with them. So we've got a lot of kids that are doing dual credit classes at Johnson High School. It's a great thing for our kids and so we just asked you to approve that. And me and us has got kids in college, just myself, Mr. Burcett, Mr. Rowland, and some others, and we can tell you how much that's meant to our kids going forward. And Noel over here in Monaco also in dual credit from high school for our kids.
And the cost savings...
To us as a parent, in the long run.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Adams.
What you have there in front of you is an agreement. It's with three companies actually, it's with Larson, PSN, and Herb Jones. What they're asking us to do is anytime that we, if we sign this agreement, anytime that we make a purchase from them, we get a 25% discount for the district, the school, or a senior. Herb Jones deals with the graduation yearbooks and those types. So they come together and they're just trying to offer us the best savings that they possibly can.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
No, no.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Cochran, Mr. Pierce, and Mr. Tom Cochran.
I'm the only one here and I ask for all of them. We're just trying to do our fall festivals, do our PTO, and ours is on November the 5th. And I think central mention is November the 7th, and I'm not sure about Flat Gap on me.
22nd of October, I believe. Mr. Pierce and Mr. Cochran both get six, Greg. Girls' basketball tonight has to be excused, so they have to host those activities during the major schools.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Mr. Sayer.
We ask you to approve the community use facilities as listed.
It's just the one for the afternoon.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
That is for next October. They plan on bringing a performer in here. It hasn't been in the street over the last few years.
Next, we have Mr. Hawley.
Who is not here?
Oh, Hawley.
I think the only thing on there was family consumer science trip to Frankfurt for a two-day workshop that involves study in that area, which is basically trying to encourage students to pursue that line of work. And as we well know, that's a shortage area for teachers, so I'd ask that you approve that for students to experience that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Sayer.
First Christian Church has asked to use one of our bus and drivers thing. I think they discussed that with Ronnie and the amount of costs and things that they'll be associated to all that or they'll be paying the whole type of costs that we're doing as far as the bus and the groups. We've done that for groups in the past.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion's been made and second by Melvin. Any discussion? If there be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have for Ms. Rice.
Again, Ms. Rice recommends the approval of two short day, properly authorized and certified short day request for special needs students. Do you have that information?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Burcett.
And finally, she also has on there an MOA for ABC before behavioral health care. Gets a program set up as part of the board's favor team and they will be providing services to students committed to high school at this time. And if someone enters the program at elementary level, maybe that...
Thank you. Motion to approve.
So made.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Mr. Adams.
You have two MOAs there with the Johnson County Health Department. The first one being if there's a disaster such as a flood... You have two MOAs there with the Johnson County Health Department, the first one being if there's a disaster, such as a flood, tornado, or whatever, that they could use our facility to get needed. The second one being if it was a flu epidemic of some type, they could provide us shots for that to where it is, to help them with the load if it was going to be as a county. Again, those, both of those would have to be big-time emergencies declared by the governor or whatever, so, and we wouldn't be in school for either one of those. I don't understand if we approve those.
Is there a motion to approve?
Somebody...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Next, we have Ms. Muse.
Yes, supported by permission to destroy small brands, there's no matching funds required by the district, and it's for after school club, archery.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Somebody...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Mr. Fairchild.
Yes, we're asking the board's permission to purchase new school lessons for the two thousand seventeen, seventeen, eighteen school year. One, two propane, one diesel.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Somebody...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Our, Mr. Fairchild, our propane bus that we have now, how's that work?
So far, great.
Really good?
The supplier is, is working out fantastic.
I just hear you.
Yep.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, looking for a status update with Mr. Crum.
Yes, we got word since the last board meeting that we were passed on to the second round of applications for the Work Ready Skills Initiative grant. And, um, basically what that does, I mean, the, the only, they moved about ninety of the applications forward. I was kind of hopeful that they might string them a little more. I think they basically went through and looked to see if you were hitting all the criteria, because they did send back a sheet that I just actually, even after a couple of days' work, we just, I just got this in the mail this afternoon, a sheet where they, I think pretty much what they did was go through and try to analyze each of the criteria to see how well that you were meeting that. So it looked like that, you know, of course, we hit, we knew our application was pretty strong, hit just about everything. So the only problem we got is that the state took over a month longer than they were supposed to, to make their decision on who they were passing forward, but they kept their, their end deadline the same. So instead of having sixty days to do it, we had about twenty-nine days to do a, and I told you, probably the biggest, one of the biggest grant projects we've ever tried to ride. So I, I don't know if they're doing that intentionally to try to weed out, since there were so many applicants, and they didn't want that many applicants. I think they were wanting to see who was really serious about it, and who would really try to move forward and get it finished in the timeline. So we do have our hands full, but we got a good group working on it. We're going, we got a meeting scheduled in the morning with Carl D. Perkins and with Paintsville both on, on trying to look at the next steps. It, it, you know, it's very detailed. They are requiring quite a bit of information, but I, I think that we will be all right to get everything together. I, I definitely think from what I'm hearing from other entities around, I think we have maybe one of the more comprehensive ones in terms of trying to hit all those sectors that were identified and trying to provide, you know, skills for our students, so.
And we already have partners in ours and...
Yeah, matter of fact, I got a phone call from, from another district that is applying also, and they were desperate, they were looking for partners, but they didn't include a lot in that first project. So we, you know, when they first wrote the application, so we really, matter of fact, we, we even talked today, we may have to scale down. We put, with so many partners, that they're, they're asking a lot from each of those, that we may actually have to try to, you know, maybe narrow that focus a little bit. So, but it's, it's going to be challenging, but I think it's very worthy, and it's something that's important for our district.
Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Holbrook.
In your packet, you should have a copy of the quote from Admentia in regards to Play-Doh courseware. For past several years, we've used Odysseyware, which would allow all students to be registered in the program, but only forty to fifty be actively using the program. Our renewal was coming due, and this company actually stopped by, this, this is a replica, we've actually used this product before in the past, but cost prohibitive use, the continuation use of the product. They've had some pricing model changes, and for what they are proposing, you know, sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for three years, but every student at the high school and alternative school can use the product at the same time, probably limited to forty or fifty seats. And cost, the, the cost between two products is significantly different. After the company found out, Odysseyware found out that we were looking at another vendor, they dropped their price, but they still came in about six thousand dollars more than what Play-Doh was looking at. This is a, we've used it, we use Odysseyware as a credit recovery program. This, this right here worked as a credit recovery program and, you know, supplement to other course material as well, you know, interventions, diagnostics. And with the one-to-one initiative, it's going to be a way for students to even be able to, let's say they're not picking up on a particular math or science area at one time, they can go in there and actually use that to help reinforce their skills. We're looking at a three-year agreement with them. We're actually, if the board approves, we're looking to go ahead and roll right after fall break, because our subscription's up with Odysseyware, and to continue on, they're going to want more money.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this content?
Somebody...
Second? Is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, we've got the superintendent's personnel report, where there is no action, and at this point in time, we are going to recess into executive session pursuant to KRS 618102, discuss acquisition or sale of property, and to discuss proposed pending litigation. We have a motion to...
Somebody...
Second. All in favor? I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. We will go back into regular session after the executive session.